We'll call the meeting to order. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it.
And a second. Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Moving on to the select board minutes. Ten, ten, twenty-two. Is there a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the minutes of the Castleton Select Board for Monday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-two, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Corrections, additions.
Nobody's going first. Leaving it to you.
You want to go first, Mary Lee?
Why not?
Okay.
Approval of agenda. Municipal planning grant should be inserted in its place instead of should be put inserted. Take put out. And then down further, when the Select Board to meet the new president, I think after his name, inaugural president, both should be capitalized. And further down, it says, doesn't say doctor. It said, I can't pronounce his name. It's got just D girl. Down the next paragraph, the last word should be reconsider, not consider. The first line on the, on the second page. Comes back lower after the state, should be apostrophe P S, the state's negotiation. The next line down, under miscellaneous purchases, the second line, it says town garage bay, and they have, should be a price, instead of have, have a price for six hundred dollars. Down under manager's report, it says M. L. Harris asked if M. Holmes or M. Jones would be going over the financials. The over should be put in there between going and financial. The last paragraph on that same page, the backhoe at the transfer station, M. Jones stated that they may be coming back to insert the board to do something with it, discussion on the operation of it and its ability to serve its purpose in its current condition. That's all.
Is that it, Mary Lee?
That's it.
Okay. Bob?
I wasn't here, so, okay.
Dick?
I'm good.
Joe?
Thank you, Mary Lee. Those are good catches, all. In, on the second page, the third paragraph says, second line, they may have to, I'm sorry, third line, R. Holmes made a motion to authorize the town manager fifteen, five thousand five hundred dollars for contract with Green Mountain Sand Blasting to get the tandem. Authorize the town manager, I think we should say something like, to, to contract with Green Mountain Sand Blasting for an amount not to exceed fifty-five hundred dollars to get the tandem truck and skid steer sand blasted. In the, under the municipal planning grant, the last line says J. Mark opposed. I actually voted in favor of that, although my vote was late, but it was an aye. So that should be motion carried, you know, three to one. You can remove J. Mark opposed. Motion should, it should say motion carried four, zero. I was inclined to approach the last paragraph a little differently, but I think we're striving for the same end. Instead of saying the backhoe at the transfer station, comma, M. Jones stated, I would say, M. Jones, start the sentence with, M. Jones stated that they, that he may be coming back to the board, add he, to do something about the backhoe at the transfer station. And in the last line of that page, neither of the it'ses should have apostrophes, just I T S. On the third page, sixth paragraph that starts the painting, the new public works director is confident can do it in-house. I would suggest we add that town staff can do it in-house. That's it.
Okay. Vote on the motion with the corrections and our additions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I'm just gonna stay, because I wasn't here.
Sure. Bob, stand down. Moving on. Citizens' concerns and/or comments not on the agenda.
That would probably be me.
Mary? Mary McIntyre.
Mary McIntyre, I'm just letting you know that the CEDREC committee has been working to have a business meeting. We're gonna host a Castleton business meeting, November third, here, at six-thirty. Those of you who could attend would be great. We're not looking for you to participate, but it would be great to show businesses in town that you're interested in them. What we're hoping to do, it's a brainstorming effort, and we'll invite them in, and we're gonna make it about them. We want to hear from them about what their needs are. And making it clear that we're simply a conduit from the CEDREC board to you folks, and that we don't necessarily have the answers for them, but we're bringing resources. So we've got Devin Neary coming from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and we've got Tyler Richardson coming from the Chamber of Economic Development of the Rutland Region. I have to read that, because both of them have such long titles. And so those gentlemen, the thought process is, we've never done this before, but our thought processes for the agenda is we'll do a basic introduction, then we'll do a roundtable in which the business people will have a chance to come up to a microphone, explain what their issues are. Maybe they're having issues with not getting enough help. Maybe they can't get help because there's not enough housing. Maybe they're not getting enough help because their pool, the pool, isn't skilled enough. I don't know what it's gonna be. Hope it's a variety of things, actually. And then we're gonna give Devin and Tyler a chance to explain how they may be able to help, interject, what ideas they might have for them. But as we've talked before, I know Select Board, Joe Mark has mentioned, we need to show appreciation to the businesses we have, and that's what we're trying to do. And we're really, we're really reaching to a lot of, we've made personal phone calls, we've met with people, now we're going, we're branching out. We finally have an ad that we're gonna get out, and so hopefully you can help spread the word.
What time, Mary?
Six-thirty. And we're gonna, we're gonna be here early to greet people. And will this microphone be available to us?
No.
Oh, that would be?
Yep.
Okay. So where would they stand? Where we're thinking of putting them at a podium?
I can bring the podium over. We have, we have one over in the office.
Roger, footing it.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure. I looked at this yesterday, and I thought, oh, this version three looks super Mary. Alpedi, I said, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Mary asked about fire, the capacity of the room, so I asked Karen today to reach out to Division of Fire Safety to come over and take a look at the building, because they gotta look at it with the stuff in there, in it, and to give us a, an answer on that, so.
That's for this room?
Yeah.
And we're gonna have all the tables down?
Okay.
With the exception of that one.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mary? Joe?
Not, not a question for Mary, but just a comment that if, if three of us plan to attend, we should warn it as a Select Board meeting.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Mary.
Mr. Chairman, you got, you got some, James Thomas is online with his hand up.
Jim Thomas with his hand up?
Yep.
Is he up on?
He's on Zoom.
He's on Zoom?
He's not at Crystal Heights.
He's not at Crystal Heights.
He's at Florida.
Go ahead, Jim.
Good evening. The comment I wanted to make was on the appointment of the town manager as the interim zoning. I can wait till then if you so prefer.
That'd be fine. Want to do it now, or?
Up to you.
Go ahead.
I, although it's not against the law, I actually think it's a bad idea. In the past, it has been the policy of the Select Boards to appoint the town manager, but I will just give you the example of the fiasco with the Main Street Town Office when the town manager was also zoning administrator. It, it's kind of incompatible. This town manager, he's trying to make the people happy. The zoning administrator, he's trying to enforce the law, which doesn't always make them happy. That's my only comment.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Any questions or comments for Jim? Joe?
Jim, am I correct in remembering that you at least once filled in as interim ZA?
You are. I did it on two occasions.
Right. But you're out of state, correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm currently in a warmer climate. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments? Okay. Anyone else wishing to address the board? You have anybody else there? Tom? Tom Kearns?
Tom Kearns. A couple meetings ago, in the town manager's report, you mentioned that you were revisiting the commissioned dock spaces and possibly taking them away as an action item? I didn't know if anything came of that and why that would be happening.
I believe if there is any move in that direction, it has to be done before January one. But other than that, I can't really, I can't answer your question, Tom.
Why?
Because someone else might be able to answer it.
Hold for it, Mike. Do you want me to answer it?
Yeah.
So in the past, Mr. Chairman, we had, I guess, some contentious moments with members of those that had deeded space up there, and there was, it was at a time when there was somebody else on the, on the Select Board before Mary. And there was discussion about whether or not to do away with the dock agreements, or licenses, as they call them. But the Select Board has not chose to engage with that, but I put it on there because there's that timeframe. So if the board does nothing with it, it just keeps going as it is, you know, the status quo, but if, but you have till January first to be able to notify those that have the dock space agreements if the town no longer wanted to do that. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I answer your question, Tom?
Yes and no. I mean, how would that affect? Basically, the deeds, if you have a commissioned deed, you, the deed originally said you have exclusive rights to the use of that property for the deed members. Later on, it became known as dock licenses and stuff, but that, that wasn't, that wasn't, dock license wasn't within the original deeds per se.
Right.
So I guess, I guess, two questions. Why, it seems like you're gonna open up the mother of all lawsuits in, in doing that. But, I mean, what else would, then it would just be, then, commission members could just use it for other purposes? I mean, I don't know what, where, where the town's going.
I'm not sure where we're going, I could answer that, but I can answer the deed issue is, yes, for boating, swimming, bathing, and other reasonable activities, how the deed reads. The dock spaces came into play once the town had to figure out how to manage chaos that was happening there, before my time. But that's, that's really what I heard, was people were just willy-nilly, were putting stuff in there. And so there were surveys done for those individual dock spaces and these license agreements with those that have the deeded access to the place. And then over the past few years, it's, it raises ugly, every, every spring, it rears its ugly head, and it goes away late every fall. But that's, people squatting on other people's dock rights, or people not taking care of the place, there was all kinds of issues. So it was brought before the board as, by our attorney, actually, that, you know, said that we don't, the town does not have to have those dock spaces. But that's the board's decision whether they want to engage with it or not, and it, for the last two years, they haven't engaged with it, so.
Okay. I guess you just have to stay tuned, Tom. Okie doke. Mary Lee?
Where are the dock spaces we're talking about?
Crystal Haven Common Area. So there's two parcels of, of land that the town was given to by the former Castleton Economic Corporation.
Just beyond the beach?
Correct. Where the trailers were and stuff in there. And there's two sides to it, and there's a little bay, and there's the, there's an access to the north side from East Crystal Haven, and there's access to the south side from East Crystal Haven as well, just on that really sharp ninety-degree corner, as soon as you pull off from thirty. So those areas, there's, there's a map with a hundred and twenty-something dock spaces, and they're assigned to individuals that own the, own property around the Crystal Haven area, the Crystal Heights, Crystal Meadows, East Crystal Haven, West Crystal Haven. I even think, was it New Road?
New Road, parts of Pensable Road.
Yeah. So that's where they come from, you know, going back a ways into the fifties.
Everything that was the old town poor farm.
Yeah, the poor firm, yep.
There was some, there's some property on North Road that also has.
Yeah, that's what you're saying. You live on North Road, you're right.
Property leading up, my property's one of the first ones at the end, the Staples Road. It's everything beyond, before my property, all along the North Road there, New Road, up till the Jensen's property is a commissioned property.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
Just a real question, is there an added assessment if you have a dock space?
It's not, docks don't, don't get assessed. The, the, the dock, or the deed that gives access to the area for those folks, that's where they get assessed the extra amount. Basically, it adds forty thou, thirty thousand dollars to the assessed value of their home. And I say thirty, but I said forty originally. I've read it two different places, but it's, it's, they're assessed an amount of money added to the value of their property for that access. It has nothing to do with the dock spaces.
Any other questions? Just a comment.
Dick? Just to give you a little background, Tom, if you rewind a few years, there was a lot of abandoned property and crud and stuff and behaviors that weren't appropriate occurring there. And we've tried to clean that up. We've gotten rid of the abandoned trailers and some of the abandoned dock spaces. We improved the boat launch, did some other stuff, and some of the home, the, the people who have rights to that property seem to be more considerate now and seem to be less likely to abandon property there. So that's one of the reasons why at one point we were considering taking some action, but at this point, I don't feel, I don't think it's necessary.
I mean, various people that abutted where the placards, where they built the houses, they were maintaining it, and then some of them moved, and so the new people were maintaining it, because then, just like, well, it's town land, you should maintain it, you know, so.
And we do, Tom. For the last four years.
Well, I mean, I, well, it's, I, it's a big can of worms, and it's, this, it's very difficult to unwind the dock licenses from the deeded things. Like if, if a real estate agent, and whether he has the right to do it or not, puts up a sign for this property is for sale, he's got a little sticker on the dock that says deeded dock rights. You know, so all these properties are being traded with the idea that they have a deeded dock right. Now, half of them are unusable. When they redid them, they just basically ran every five yards along the shorefront, put a marker down, but no one surveyed to say, well, you can actually put a boat here or not. So then we got reshuffled along that second time.
Okay. Anything else on this?
But anyway, it's.
Yeah, yes, if you can hear me.
Who's this?
Jim. Jim Thomas.
Yes, Jim.
I believe that the, as one of the owners of, of those spaces, I believe the deed actually says the town has the right to recall the dock space.
Okay.
So that the Select Board would be in the, would be in the right. I, the original comment, I believe, from Bill when he did the reassessment was that the additional money was for the people who had deeded access to the lake. So I'm not sure that if you took back the dock space, whether or not you would still be able to successfully put that thirty to forty thousand dollar assessment on the property. But since you're not considering it, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Shall we move on? Anyone else who wishes to address the board? Item not on the agenda? Do you have anybody else there, Mike?
Katie Culp is on. Katie, do you have anything?
No, I don't, I don't, I'm just here.
Okay.
Thanks. Maybe later, not now. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the police chief's report. Yes, did you get all the, the new?
Yes. Justin just did, actually, this weekend. So September was a very busy month for us in a lot of ways. As I look through the service calls, calls of service, we were down a little bit from August, and nothing really stands out, I mean, outside of the registry checks that we do quarterly, you'll see them in September, that we just finished them, actually. So we had seven of those. Lost a lot of property watches. Any questions on the service calls? No questions in the service calls? Okay, arrests, where we really jumped up, September was extreme, we had twenty-seven arrests in September. Probably three of those were multiples, so when you see the number twenty-seven, it's not twenty-seven separate people, probably more like twenty-two, just some, some had multiple charges, because that's what it's listing on there for, that's how it's broken down, anyway, in actual violations. So we've been really busy with that. Why the increase? Don't really know. It just happened to be a ruly month. Traffic violations were still, you know, were still a little over a hundred for that Calls of service, university, really not a lot. I know we had four more than August, but that's typical. Usually from beginning, or the end of August till almost Halloween, it's usually the weekends we get the most calls. But this past weekend was relatively quiet. The last two weekends, actually, we haven't issued any tickets to off-campus people at all. Backup that we provide for by us. So both over in Fairhaven. And as we broke it down, I talked about the calls. We also, you know, the, the biggest piece that I've commented from September, and I've done them before, a lot of mediation stuff, especially, it's the little complaints that are the ones that we use our most resources on when it comes to property stuff, right of ways. People want to cut branches with a tree on the other property, people just have disputes over that. We kinda, I've done six of these, and probably four of them were successful. One, I had to arrest somebody, and then the other one, they just couldn't be together to even have any kind of mediation. So we try to do, we try to do that as much as we can within our scope. We talked about the arrests, Red Downton Properties, foot patrols, we still do. We did, we did remove two of our speed carts. We took the one off of Creek, and we took the one up off of Johnson Spooner. And then we still have the one on Route Thirty South, that's gonna come out before November Bulletproof and body armor, okay, so Justin provided, submitted another grant for that, which we do every year. And, you know, we, on the average, every five years, try to change them up, just because material weakens. Weekend officers, okay, so we talked about the violations. Past two weekends, like I said, were good, but the, we're keeping a running total on the actual residents that we have, as you can see on, on the page there in the very back, on the houses that we kinda watch, the ones that are problematic. And we're still in the process of dealing with the dispatch services. I'm in the process of trying to get on the State Committee, because one of, one of the guys that were on there is retiring, so I'm waiting back to hear from them to get on that committee. I don't know how much will come out of that, because we're kind of a head of the game a little bit, because of, right now, Rutland County sheriffs applied for part of that six-point-five million, and they got about three-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand for, they already got the, the consoles from the Homeland Security Grant prior to that, so now they're, they're talking other things, other equipment and stuff, more or less office space, and maybe some reconditioning of the, of the offices for space. So that's kind of where that's going at that time. We don't know, we don't have a timeframe when that's gonna happen, but the budget's gonna change. When that happens, when we have to pay for it. It can go anywhere from sixty to one-hundred thousand a year. That's for us. Yep. That's a big chunk, that's a big chunk of money, but we have not paid for dispatch since this department's been around. The state police, they don't want anything to do with it, they're strictly nine-one-one. We put the new phone system in, it all, the only thing you can get the emergency line is the nine-one-one line, if you want emergency. Everything else goes to the on-duty cellphone, or my phone, or the office. And it's been working out. We've answered the complaints, the on-duty officer has the duty cellphone, I have my cellphone, which is published, so if it's an emergency, just like on the message, if we don't answer the phone, or we're in a bad cell area, it says, call nine-one-one if it's emergency. Obviously, that's been happening also. So our contact with dispatch is very minimal at this point.
Questions for the chief? Joe?
So who picks up the nine-one-one calls?
Westminster. They are, they're the PSAP. So they get their money from the nine-one-one board, which is through grants from the feds. So you have one, two, three, four, five PSAPs in the state that have nine-one-one access, Hartford, Westminster, St. Albans, which runs out, the PD runs their, they contract out, Williston, and one more, I think, which one it is, up near St. J.
And what happens next?
What do you mean?
So.
So, so the State Committee is supposed to give guidelines, but what they did is they put the cart before the horse. They put all this money out for everybody to apply for through this grant, from part of this eleven million that's, that's supposed to be going to this new PSAP system, and the committee just barely met two months ago, but everybody else has kind of jumped on already. We've, we've already been talking among Rutland County departments, as in where we're gonna go with it, who wants to be, who wants to play. And we asked Rutland City, they want nothing to do with it. Rutland County's the only one that we have that we could do. How's it gonna be funded later?
No, chief, what I'm asking is, so somebody in Westminster picks up a nine-one-one call coming from Castleton. What do they do with it?
Then they, then they call us.
So it's an alternative to people calling you directly, or the duty officer?
It's anything non-emergency that we have to deal with, it has to go directly to us.
The other thing that I wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, is that I appreciate your telling us. us the amount of time that it takes to process these arrests. That's helpful.
Yeah, I mean, you got to remember, last month, we were so busy. I mean, we had two fugitives, we, I don't know, it just was crazy. It can take hours to tie somebody up, stake them in court, lodge them, trying to get hold a judge, get the state's attorney. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of time and resources put into it.
Yes, sir. Do those speed carts have any kind of computerized in it? Other words, if a car goes by at 65 miles an hour, does it record it inside the machine though? No. So you don't know?
Right.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Most of the people, the community, especially since up in here, they, they keep me abreast if people are speeding on the roads. And we try to put people out there to sit on the road for a period of time. We try to do it weekend, and then when you're busy with calls, you always can't do that.
Other questions for the chief, comments? Thank you very much, chief, we appreciate it.
I just have a, so your officers get a call directly?
Correct. If it's not, if it's not emergency, so if they call the 5012 line, which is the, which is the published line for us, that and the 277, 2750, 2750 comes directly here, the 5012 line goes right to our duty phone.
So Officer Jones gets that and says, okay, I'm heading over to Smith's for a possible domestic.
Well, domestics would probably go 911. If it's a dispute, that's not violent, that's not assaultive, because most people will call 911 for anything like that.
Okay. In any event, if it's a dispute, so how do your officers get that out to anybody else so that they know where your officer is going to be?
So we have to enter our own cases in Volcor.
Right.
So which everybody has access to. Westminster would have everybody that's under their region listed.
And Fairhaven guys can see who's on the screen, so they, I'm just thinking officer safety, so that.
Yes.
So they have backup in theory.
Correct. They could call, they could call another officer, call dispatch and say, hey, can you send one of your units down because I'm going to a certain call or whatever.
They could still use the radio.
Yeah, I know, yeah, we can still use.
Dispatch just doesn't want that routine crap coming in.
Right.
Like, like license checks and stuff unless you're in what we call a no-cell zone. Or you lose your Verizon Air Card because you're Route 30, the, I call it the dead corridor, where everything drops once you get past your house, actually. Once you pass Bob's house, you can't even call it a phone, you can't, it's, it's pretty bad, which, which, that's another issue, but, yeah. I mean, it's not like they're telling us that you can't. They've been pounding us for the last year and a half, preparing us for this. So everybody's been trying to get on the game here. Rutland area was the worst one because Westminster was covering a lot more agencies in Rutland County than other areas in the state. Now, since they took Rutland out, they have Westminster that covers Brattleboro, Bannington, covers whole southern Vermont, and then Hartford has their own, and there's some PDs that contracted them, like Windsor PD contracts to Hartford PD. And I was talking to the chief a while ago and they pay 140,000 a year for those services. They've been doing that for a while. I'm like, holy mackerel.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you very much, chief, appreciate it. Moving on, is there anyone else? Well, I guess we've done that. North Star Fireworks, this is a nice quote, industry challenges for July 2023. I believe we have some material on this from North Star Fireworks indicating an increase from 10,000 to 12,500. What is your pleasure?
What is the APA on the back of it? Another page. They say they're going up, they're going up, they're going up, but I don't see a dollar amount.
Shipping costs were what they're, they talked about in there, Mary Lee, of the containers coming over, and they said basically, now it's where it used to be $8,000 to $10,000 in 2019, now it's approximately $45,000 per container, which impacts the overall cost of the product by roughly 50%. So it happened last year, they went from 7,500 to a minimum of $10,000 if it was within a week of Independence Day, left or right, a week earlier, a week after, it was $10,000. Now it went from 10,000 to, to 12,500.
In other words, this is just information.
It is.
As to this.
Correct. The, the North Star is the, is the company that we purchased the fireworks through historically, and they're the ones that schedule and do all the conducting of the, firing of the stuff.
Any other questions? Mike or Joe?
Can you remind us, Mike, of the history of who's been paying for the fireworks?
I can.
I can, Mike.
Yeah, well, LBA, you know, used to pay for these and then, so I've been here four and a half years, and since I've been here, LBA hasn't paid for them. It was, it was put into a budget, the voters have voted on it a couple of years ago, and it was $7,500 that was put into a line item for fireworks. Now that 7,500 has grown to 12,500. We, we've solicited donations, we were successful last year to get the 2,500 that was needed to bridge the gap between the 7,500 that was in the budget and the $10,000 that increased to, that amount, that increase. So we were able to get that. Now we're talking doubled that. I'm not sure if we're going to get donations in that amount of money. But again, if we don't get donations and we don't budget for it, then there's going to be no fireworks. So that's, that's, that's kind of the, not doomsday scenario, but just for the board to contemplate of how we want to go about approaching this for this coming fiscal, to put it in this fiscal year.
Well, didn't we, when we were short last year, I think the LBA went up to 5,000 or 6,000 when they were paying for it. And since we were short last year, we asked them for 2,500. What did we get? About 12,500?
Yeah, I think it was 12,500, yeah.
12,500. So the other 12,500 had to be raised by donations?
And we had a couple of different, we had two small donations and then Woodards Marine donated and Lions Club, I believe it was Lions.
And we did the coin drop.
Coin, yeah.
Yep.
But it, it was easy to close the gap.
Before we have a motion.
Well, I wanted to say.
Sure.
I read this four times and it's not making any sense to me. Fourth paragraph down, even though costs have risen, keep in mind that if you raise your budget to 12,500, you will see a larger display. Unlike hotels that offer the same room for 100 bucks in April, but $300 in October, you will be seeing a larger display for your larger budget. If your current budget is already over 12,500, please consider raising your budget 10 to 20% to ensure you get the same size show that you had last year. Now, doesn't the first sentence say that? I read the first sentence and then the last sentence is like a contradiction of the first sentence. I don't, I don't understand. Do you not see that, guys?
All right, do your board members answer that?
I, that's my contradiction. We got to raise it above 12,500 to get the same size show as last year. But the first sentence says just the opposite.
Says it'd be larger.
You will see a larger display. Even though your budget, raise your budget to 12,500, you will see a larger display. But the last sentence says you have to raise it 10 or 20% to see a larger display. Maybe I not, not understand it.
It says you got to raise it 10 to 20% to get the same size show.
Yeah, but the first sentence says you're going to have a larger show at 12,500.
I think that's referring to towns like us that have been buying the cheaper displays of 10,000, at 10,000. So we're already raising ours more than 10% if we go to 12,500. But if you're already at 12,500.
You need to go another 10% on top of it.
Okay, I would agree with that. Mike, what is in, this would come from this year's budget?
The money for, no, the money for this year's budget.
Is spent.
Is spent, yeah. So this is, July 1st starts the new fiscal year. The problem is they want payment ahead of time to save our place in, as we've been a very loyal customer, as they, they want to say, so they want to offer it to us first. And I, and I personally, talking with Kerry Fowler and Bob Fowler, who no longer fire, do this stuff for North Star, it's getting harder and harder to find places that do this. And that's not, again, not a scare tactic. I'm just presenting you with the, what we're faced with and try to help answer any questions you may have and.
How can we, how could we approve a budget of 12,500, which would come from the next fiscal year, if we don't have an approved budget of 12,500?
We do it every year, it's just kind of like one of those.
That doesn't make it right. If you don't have an, if you don't have an approved budget. Yep. Can they at least wait till after the March elections?
Well, if they, if, no, they won't hold a space for us. I've already put this off two meetings to try to, this is the second.
You said a week before or a week after, right?
Yeah, that's, so they're, they're trying to lock in their displays and because it's, that's the, the heavy volume they have, they do per year is that, those weeks, so, you know, that's where they want to lock it in and guarantee their money, I think, is really what it comes down to.
It's a lot of money for 20 minutes.
This year was the best year.
25 minutes.
No, this year was more than that.
Was it?
It was like 40 minutes, 45 minutes. I'm just telling you right now, this year's fireworks were the best since I've been here in eight years.
I would agree with that.
Never seen them that, you're right, normally, now the ones prior, 20, 25 minutes. These were like 40, 45, I'm telling you right now, it was a long time.
That's okay.
I was amazed, I was like getting ready to go, I'm like, what?
I thought it was sitting on my deck timing.
And that's where the extra came from, when they're saying that little extra is because we ended up paying $10,000 rather than the normal 7,500. So the, the price increased, they're, they're increasing their price due to their, their costs, but in turn, it also puts us on their radar and we got a better show. I'd agree with that.
Was it?
The public comments were, were saying this was the best they've seen in, in a long time, so.
Okay. We kicked it around enough to have a motion.
Is this the same company that Pulteney uses, do you know?
I, I'm not sure, Mary Lee.
Ask, if it's the same people.
Because a lot, Pulteney was doing something on their, their firemen used to do their own. They got licensed and did their own, but I don't think they do that anymore, but I'm not really positive.
Just because I sat on that board last year, so, Mike, would this lock us into some dates? Because remember, we got a lot of heat last year for picking a date different than Pulteney.
Yeah.
And we interfered with people's.
Okay, folks, what's your pleasure, is there a motion?
I need to ask a question at some point.
Oh, sure, go ahead, ask it now.
Want to be clear, we have already spent the money that, for the fiscal year that we are currently in, correct?
Correct.
So the money, so we have yet to determine a budget for this coming fiscal year, that is also correct.
Correct.
So we could, if we decided to budget a dollar or 12,500 or 15. Okay. But if we, they want payment now, we don't have the money to pay them. Is that correct?
Right, not, not out of that budget, we done, we done spending money out of the general fund to cover it till.
Okay. Anything else?
Which we do often, just to let you know.
Okay. Is there a motion? Silence, how about that? I don't know where to go with this. How soon do we have to make up our mind?
Are you asking me or are you asking them?
I'm asking your opinion.
Um, I, I don't even want, I, I don't know.
Fair enough.
I don't know how many people are on the docket.
When was this dated? You said you put this off for a meeting or?
Yeah, this is, I think this is the second meeting I put it on, because I, I told her I'd have it before the board last meeting and I.
Yeah, because I don't see a date on this document. So how much did we actually pay?
$10,000.
We paid 10.
Correct. Total 10.
But we didn't have all that 10. We raised 2,500 came from.
Yeah, we, the town paid $10,000, not 7,500 came from the town.
Okay, that's, that's what I meant.
So the, the, the risk of not deciding to authorize the manager to sign a contract with North Star, North Star at this time, is that we may be at a luck when we decide we want to have 4th of July fireworks.
That would be fair or accurate.
And the risk of passing a motion, giving him the authority to do this, creates the financial challenge of finding 12,500 in this year's budget. And the hopes that the voters will approve a budget that provides for 12,500 or at least 10 with funds raised addition to that in next year's budget.
I think that 12, I think the 2,500, the difference between the 10,000 from last year and this year, I think that's doable. I don't know if 5,000 is doable.
But we didn't pay 10,000, we paid 7,500.
Right.
Okay, so it's 7,500 to 12,500?
You know, I guess to clarify what I was saying is, if, if the board approves 10,000 in the budget and it cost, it's going to cost 12,500 to have the fireworks for next year, we raised 2,500 this year, I think we can do that again. I'm just not, I, I would not want to limit and say we're going to raise 5,000 to cover.
So I would make a motion that we authorize the manager to contract with North Star Fireworks for 4th of July fireworks in the town of Castleton that, that will cost 12,500 and direct him to put a $10,000 item into the 23, 24 budget for fireworks with the understanding that the town will endeavor to raise 2,500 on top of that.
I will second that. A second. Any other discussion? Oops, I'm sorry, Mary Lee.
Who's to say it's not going to go up again the next year?
No one.
Every year we get to decide whether to pay the piper.
I know, but you're, you're saying to pay this but put 10 in for next year, and if it's already 12,500, it'll probably be 15 next year.
This, this is next year.
Yeah, that is next. This would be for 23's, July of 23, which the budget starts on Ju, July 1st of 2023.
So Vanessa, you're just paying when you, if they approve the budget, then you're paying the town back for, oh boy.
Money comes out of the, we do this all the time, the money comes out of the general fund. And the accountants and the auditors all figure it out to make sure it all comes out and gets accounted for in the right place.
I know, but we're in the same position again, next year, Dick.
We do this every year, actually.
You, you, next year, at this time, when, this is about the same time every year they come out with, hey, would you like fireworks? It could be $14,000 next year, so we don't really, you don't know that. But it will impact this year's budget, the upcoming budget.
We're still spending money that's not approved. That's what it boils down to. Not approved. I just want to make sure.
I know you guys understand that. Now, if, if we were to, if the board was to approve this, and then the voters vote down the article, North Star already has the money. So what happens then?
We use other, we make it up with other funds within the, within the, or you could use surplus at the end of that year.
Okay.
Could I just follow up with a question? Are, are we paying them before July 1, or just committing to pay them?
Committing.
So on July 2nd, you could actually pay them?
Yeah, we've done that before. We, we, we get on the docket and then we don't pay, we don't make payment until the fiscal year starts, which is the first.
Okay, I thought I just asked that question and you basically said, no, they have to get paid now, but.
We'll commit, I guess.
You have to commit?
Commit, yeah.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I heard two ayes. Those opposed? Those abstaining?
I don't know what to do.
Well, you got to do something.
Yeah. Motion fails.
Aye.
Aye. Therefore, you, you have three votes.
I'll say no, no.
You'll say no?
Yeah.
I'll say no too, but I could, I could agree to some further compromise. So it's three to two to approve. That takes care of that. Let's move on.
Three, three approved, right, three approved and two said no.
Yeah. Okay, appointment of the town manager as the interim zoning administrator. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we appoint our town manager, Mike Jones, as the interim zoning administrator until such time as we find a permanent replacement.
I'll second that.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Joe?
So we've heard from Mr. Thomas that that's an inadvisable appointment. Mike, do we have alternatives for an interim appointment that you would support?
I don't at this time. I would love to say I did, but I don't. And I think we're going to, this is, I think it's going to be, it's going to be rough. This is going to be one of those, we can't fill positions now. This one's going to be a rough one to fill, so this might be a while before it gets filled. And just so you know, it's just, it's going to take, it's going to take time away from what I'm, other duties, I guess, to do this. So just, you know, we'll have to tighten up and everybody's got to pitch in to get this thing done.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Can I amend my motion to strike the word permanent? So that it's just until we can find a replacement, he interim or be that person interim or permanent?
That would be good.
Good idea.
I didn't catch myself either, so I just did.
Yeah, I like that one better. So if I find somebody...
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think we're doing that anyways.
My amendment?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my second, but I'll second the new one. So can somebody read that back to me, how, that's what it says?
What I'm going, okay, my motion will read that we authorized Mike Jones, our town manager, to act as the interim zoning administrator until such time as we find, as he can find a replacement for that position.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
And a second. Discussion.
Do you advertise, what do you do to try to get a new zoning administrator?
We do put it in the paper. It's going to, it'll go on social media, but one of the big ones is to put it out through Vermont League of Cities and Towns on jobs page, because all towns that are part of E O C T will see that. And if there's a zoning administrator out there that's working in another town and can give up another 12, 15 hours a week to help us out, I guess it doesn't have to be a Tuesday and Thursday. If we find somebody that can do it and they can only be here on Wednesdays and Fridays, we'll just have to change hours around and get it out there so people know. But that's typically, typically, most zoning administrators around this area, they work at several different towns.
So it's 12 to 15 hours?
Correct.
Because I believe Mr. Rosenthal worked in Paulette as well, right?
He did. And they're all, they're, most of them are working two to three towns, because they're just hard to grow one.
So you haven't advertised yet, Mike?
No. No, we were, I was talking with some folks and that all kind of fell through, so I was trying to find someone that could do it without having to wait for an advertisement.
Are we going to advertise it as soon as possible?
Karen's doing it tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Mary Lee?
Just throwing out a name. No bullets at me, please. What about Patsy Egan Burleke? She was zoning administrator many years ago. Maybe she would do it part-time and save you from having to do it until you can get a full-time person. I don't even know if she would. She was zoning administrator for a long time.
She goes to Florida in the winter now.
Does she now?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Mary?
Just in my capacity as the chairperson of SEDREC, and I can't imagine that I'm the only one that tries to get ahold of Mike, and it's not easy now to get ahold of him for help. And, but how about assistance for Mike? I mean, Mary Jo, is it Mary Jo? Peter, she helps now?
She's the assessor.
Okay. But can she help? I mean, she's knowledgeable.
No.
Or is that a conflict of interest?
It could be a conflict, but she's also, we've already talked to her and she's, she works other towns as well and she doesn't have the time to do it.
And who's the assistant now? Isn't there an assistant, wasn't there an assistant to Jonas?
There is, and it's Martha, and we've asked Martha and she doesn't want to do it either.
And how about that? How about seeking more, somebody to assist to at least handle some of the paperwork?
Well, Martha's still doing that.
But she won't do it anymore.
Right. She won't, she won't be the zoning administrator and she doesn't have more hours, time for more hours.
Okay, Joe?
Well, to follow up on Mary's point, I agree, we're probably putting a lot on Mike above the large job he already had, but to help in this interim period, we don't have to find somebody to work on zoning. We could find somebody to work on anything else that he would otherwise be trying to do. And obviously, we have the resources to do that in terms of payroll. So I would urge you to consider that as well, Mike, whether there's someone who could help you with grant writing, grant administration, other kinds of projects that are farmable out, that you're going to have to leave behind if you're going to take this over for a few months.
Fair enough. There is a new person at the fire department that I don't know. I guess she knows who I am, but I don't know who she is, but that, I am going to approach her because she does grant writing and stuff like that, so, but I've never met her, but I, so...
Okay, are you ready for the motion? The motion is to appoint Mike as interim zoning administrator. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Rutland Regional Transportation Agency Advisory Council Certification Appointment. I believe this is something we have in our packets and it has to do with appointing David Fabricus?
Fabricus.
Fabricus. Who is the director of Public Works, the former person was Chris Demar?
Foraker.
Foraker, Chris Foraker. Is there a motion?
Do we have to reappoint Michael Jones as the regular representative as well?
Why, sure, why not? Why don't you put it both in one motion?
It's okay. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Michael Jones as the regular representative to the Rutland Regional Transportation Advisory Council and David Fabricus as the alternate representative.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second. Is there discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
I think that's something that has to be signed.
Yeah.
We didn't ask you if you would accept it, though.
I do it now.
He gave us the form, so...
Okay, good point, Joe.
He's been the representative for, ever since he's been town manager.
They only meet once a month, so...
In Rutland, though, probably, right?
Well, they're doing hybrid now, both zoom into that.
Okay, moving on to the brief manager's report.
Before I...
Where you going, Peter?
Oh, I'll see you tomorrow.
Well. Go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, before I start, just an update. These are things that we weren't aware of that are happening in town. The paving on Route 4A from Sand Hill Road back towards Castle and Corner started today. We're just at, we have some kind of wires crossed with V-Trans that, I found out about the project from basically west of Sam's U-Save to west of Perineus Market. And I, when I asked them if they were doing it, they said, oh, yeah. But we didn't, they didn't reach out and let us know that. And so we weren't able to let the residents know that there would be some, maybe some disruption in traffic flow. But they started paving today from Sand Hill Road and they're going to be heading west towards Castle and Corners. Brent's going to reach out to them and find out if there's any other plans that they may have before winter. There's, it got published today on social media and it'll show up, should show up on Front Porch Forum. But the railroad crossings at Crampton Road, they're starting to work on those tomorrow. Won't be closed, they're just doing some prep work, but next week it will be closed for about six hours when they're doing some rail bed improvements and rail replacements. Amtrak had a bunch of money and they want to upgrade their crossings. So that would be, again, tomorrow, Crampton Road, just some prep work and next week, we'll get more detail on when that will be, or hours, I should say. And then North Road, the tracks at North Road will be worked on this Wednesday and the road will be closed. Emergency vehicles, we've already talked to the folks here in town and regional ambulance service that if you're going to get to North Road, you're going to have to go around. They are going to have a big steel plate there that if it was an absolute, you know, have to get through there, that they can drag it over the tracks, but it's a bigger span, so heavy, big heavy vehicles won't be able to go over it. But the fire chief reached out to the Hillside Cemetery Association and they're going to let the small trucks go through the cemetery if they need to get something on the, this end of, that end of North Road. But if it's up past the Egan Farm, probably, they're going to have to go around. But it'll be put out to the public, the message has been put out, started to be put out to the public about those delays.
One day during the day, correct?
Yeah, six hours is what they're saying. And I've asked them to do, start late enough where most of the folks that are, work day shift or can get out. And those people are coming home off third shift and get home before they start tearing it up or you can't get through.
Is Crampton Road the one that goes to the trailer park?
Correct.
That they're blocked in if they don't get out?
That one's a shorter span, so they're only going to, they're going to have, again, this plate and that fuel trucks, everything can go over that, heavy vehicles, and they're going to have it right there. So if someone does have to get out in an emergency, they'll drag the plate into place and they'll go over it. But if it's just, there may be some delays. You know, if they're working, they might, they might have to wait there for a couple minutes before they put that plate across. But if it's an emergency vehicle there or someone has their hair on fire and screaming, I got to get to the hospital or something, they have a plate there, they'll get them out of there.
Are they going to be notified, all of the trailers be notified?
We're just going to put it out by social media, on Front Porch Forum, the town website.
Giving the time, approximate time that...
Yeah, that, once they, for the, for the road closure, that's what we're waiting on, it's the Vermont Rail System, to say, acknowledge, yes, we'll start at 8:30 in the morning, so that, because it's six hours, that to allow people to get to work and not be impeded or have to go way around.
No other way into that Fort Warren Trailer Park, is there? Just that one crossing?
That's correct.
Who owns the trailer park?
Guy named Brian, is that his name?
Is it Billings?
Yes.
I mean, I...
We will, we will reach out to him.
Yeah, I mean, I think a half an hour of his time spent putting a 8 by 11 on every door would be well spent.
I'll make sure that, that we do that. He's pretty receptive, so... Okay. So that, now going on to the report. I am meeting, I'm on page one, Stasiel Road Stormwater Scoping Study. I am meeting with Ethan Peppin tomorrow at nine o'clock to discuss the grant for the salt and sand shed and some, what alternatives that the town has there. No questions, I'm going to page two, transfer station, paragraph two. I saw Chris on Saturday at the transfer station and that they, they're waiting for DigSafe to try to mark those lines out, to put those bollards in to protect the electrical box. So their plan is to do it this week, and I spelled Danny Gray wrong twice. The refrigerant, on paragraph 2B, I don't know why there's a 2 there, I'll fix that, but... We're running into issues with this vendor to reclaim refrigerant out of all these appliances that, like AC units and refrigerators. I spoke with a local contractor who does this, puts in heat pumps and all that. We could actually buy the equipment. It's an online EPA course. We could buy the equipment for less than two grand, train somebody, one of our employees to do this stuff, and the cost per, like 100 appliances, because they won't come in, right now they won't come and remove this stuff unless we have at least 100 pieces there. To get rid of the reclaimed refrigerant, it'd be about $126 for all 100 pieces. So the initial investment would be less than two grand. It's something to think about for the long run, that, because we're having problems getting somebody to do this. And we got a call from Mark Shea that they're having problems over there getting somebody to do it too. So just something I'm kicking around to see if really in the long run, is it worth us? Because if we, if we get found negligent, I was told the other day that the fine is $25,000 if you release this refrigerant negligently into the atmosphere. So, I mean, that would be someone doing it maliciously or intentional, but, but it may be worth looking into to do it ourselves. And that way, this stuff doesn't build up and build up and we have this stuff sitting there for...
Well, not to say, 100 pieces, that's ungodly, it looks terrible up there.
There's like 120, over 120 there now. And he's supposed to come this week to do it. And then we load the stuff up and we bring the scrap metal down to M and B. So it's just, being in the driver's seat might be in our best interest.
Do air conditioners come under the same thing?
Yes. I'm on page four, top of the page, solar projects. I'm not sure if the select board saw the letter that came out about they're moving forward with that solar project as planned. I mean, most, I think that really at this point, it's like turning it on, because it, most of the stuff's in there.
What I got from that letter was that, oh, they're just going to flip the on switch.
Yeah.
It's already built.
Yeah, it's already, the stuff's there. It's funny how the timing on things, but that's supposed to go live, that's basically. Have you been getting the, I've been sending you the daily reports, so I don't need to talk about those, but things are going well down at the plant, at the sewer plant for the upgrades. I'm at the bottom, B, under 4B on page four, sewer infrastructure. We're having, we're having some unusual backups at this point. And they were down today trying to find the one behind Tagmo Towel. There's a, there is a concrete asbestos line down there and it's caved in. And we want to find out, did it cave in because it's decayed or did somebody do something, like drive a heavy piece of equipment or something over it? So the guy from the rail, rail service was supposed to be there as well. But we're going to have to fix it no matter what. And we're, we've expended the no-fault insurance money that we have through the league. There's $10,000 a year that the town is given in no-fault sewer insurance, but after that is expended, there's no more money. So unless, so they deny the claims, unless there's liability found or negligence on the town that we didn't do something that, that would have caused this, and then they can go through, that claim can go farther. But right now, we've spent one, on one claim on East Crystal Haven, that there's no more money. And we've got two more claims sitting there. So...
But is one of the possibilities that this could have been the result of a rail maintenance vehicle?
That's, that's what I was hoping. But I talked to the guy from the rail service and he said that all that work was done from a machine that's on the tracks. So, a lot more to follow, but that's, nothing that the town, I mean, we're insured for a reason. Where it goes after, they deny the claim, we'll see. I'm on page five, at the very bottom, under 5B FEMA, South Street Tressle. If you traveled on South Street and the Tressle, the town did the work there. It's a little, they got one rough transition, but the work's been done to get it through winter, because that's, once that's all tore apart and the culverts are replaced there, it's going to have to get paved anyway. So this was just to get us through the winter. I'm sorry, I, on page eight, halfway down versus action needed to request a board review. You've already done that, so I apologize on that one. For the sandblasting.
Correct.
I'm on page nine, six C, police station. We're getting close to completing the fixes for all those deficiencies found by our last consultant, the league, to, because January 1st, that new, that resets the, the clock for the $5,000 passive grant, so we're, we're set, we're on track to get this stuff cleaned up and be under the percentage needed, so we can apply for the grant and not lose it. And more importantly, I guess, is the fact that it's, it's all about safety, it's all about employee safety, so we're, we're doing, we're taking the steps necessary for employee safety. I'm on page 11, I'm under eight B, emergency management facilities and equipment. I just kinda give us here as a heads up, just, I can come back to you, I saw them got quotes, not that I haven't got them, I haven't sought them yet, to talk about an option for emergency management, EOC, but I just wanna put a seed out there in your head that, that's what I'm looking at. Firefighter grant, I'm on page 12, top of the page, B, assistance to firefighter grant. I spoke to Chief Goyette about getting together the material needed for this grant, I received it today, so we have the information to provide the, the company, but if they, if the company, it's Lexipol, if they do all the work and submit it and everything, it's gonna cost the town $2,500. If they write the narrative and the town puts, does the rest of the work, it'll be $1,250. And that's for the SCBA, which, the quote last year was $150,000, it's likely gonna be higher than that this year, we haven't got, I haven't got the quote yet. The grant's not open yet either, it doesn't, they're saying now it won't be open till sometime in November. So that's the, he has the money and the budget to do this, to write the grant, so, but he is asking for a cascade system as well to replace, to fill the air bottles, so that's something I gotta look into for him. On 12, I'm still on page 12, under sub-paragraph C, operations. I haven't, I haven't got anything back, I haven't received anything back from Wade Missouri about the SOGs and SOPs and what exactly they're looking for, but I have reached out to him so that the fire department can present them to the Public Safety Committee as requested. And the, I'm on page 14, and this was on Engine Two, it carries, I'm at the very top of the page, under action needed, says I recommend that tools and equipment be removed. Their, their truck committee for the fire department has met, and they're trying to get something together for the first meeting in November to present to the Public Safety Committee, and try to move that forward with what their, at least brief what their plan is for your approval. And the parade and stuff, they're, they're working on that, they've got a committee that's working on the parade, the tree lighting, the Christmas market, cookies with sand, all that stuff there, so they're actively working on that to have that again this year.
Legion Auxiliary is gonna do the cookies.
Okay, cool, thank you. That was, that was nice last year. I'm on page 15, Parks and Rec Director. We now have a, a meeting with the applicant on Tuesday of next week, with the Parks and Rec Director, and I had a, had a good conversation, so hopefully it keeps, that continues. I'm on page 16 now, under public concerns. I tried to explain it, little as words as possible, but I, I got people reaching out from the community about Jonas Rosenzall's passing, and during that timeframe, there was discussion about the elderly care facility, I put that in quotes, on Sand Hill Road, and concerns that, there's still concerns floating around that the members of the DRB are on the board, and there could be a conflict of interest. I don't reply to them with my opinions, but I just, I brought, I wanted to bring it to your attention, that it's, it's floating around out there, and I shared with, with the DRB Chair today, and Katie Culpo, some of the other things that were said about people trying to influence the DRB on the decision, so it's out there, it's, and I, and I tried to point out to the, to the select board in this, that I just said, I find it's disappointing, the castle has become, the town is of no, which has the potential to discourage entrepreneurs, business owners, and those thinking of moving to our community as a location for our business or residence. And, so I hear, I'm not hearing, I don't hear from the people on Sand Hill Road, I'm hearing from residents and, of their, and their concerns, so, as we're, as the Cedar Act's trying to build out and, and reach out to businesses and stuff like that, I think we want to send a positive message, and I hope that's what we're doing, but there's some folks that have concerns, and I, so I brought it to your attention.
Mike, can I ask, are you talking about two people, five people, 10 people?
It was, it was five people total, that, it all happened right after Jonas passed, because that's, their real reason probably to call me was, sounds like, was to express their condolences for that, but it got onto that subject, and then two of the five asked about whether or not members of, people that live on Sand Hill Road are trying to influence the DRB's decision on the, on the, on that project.
I'd like to make a little remark for myself personally. As being a select board member, I have not been on any, any of your meetings or, I've recused myself from select board. But on the other hand, to say that I could be biased, if you remember, I was elected by over, it was 100 votes over one person, and only 23 votes behind Jim, so I would say perhaps this town has some confidence in me, and they knew I lived on Sand Hill Road at that time. That's just my personal feeling, and I, I want it as part of the record.
Fair enough. And barring your questions, that would be it.
Any questions for Mike? Joe?
No questions.
Okay, no questions. I guess you're golden. Can we move on? Do we have a purchase order?
Yes.
I don't have one.
Don't read that one.
Thought we did this one last week. You didn't already do this one?
I don't know what you're looking at.
It's computer stuff, I don't, you guys did sign one on some stuff, but I'm not sure, I don't know why we'd be recycling it, like, because I can't recall exactly what was on that last one, but...
I think we did that last month, last meeting.
Would you get it, would you get that? Where's the minutes?
Is it, is it after my warrants?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
The second one.
Oh, there is a copy of it in the, in here, Bob, it's in that, with all the warrants. It's in the middle of all of it.
Yeah, we did that.
Well, on the off chance that we have it, I'll make a motion that we approve, purchase order number 049082, for various computer equipment for various departments from Amazon for a total of $3,420.89. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second, discussion. Ding, y'all, all over the favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. There's that, Jim?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Now, moving on to the warrants. Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve warrant number 1024R for $650. Warrant 1024 for $75,604.57. Warrant 1021 for $27,312.66. Warrants 1014 for $5,988.26. Warrant 1020P for $16,163.50. And warrant 1013P for $16,769.80.
A second.
Second, Merrily. Any discussion? I'll hold on. Ding, y'all, all over the favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Here you go, Mike. Okay. You wanna do this, Merrily?
Oh, you can.
You want me to do it? Make a motion, we approve warrant 1021P for $654.67. And warrant 1014P for $654.67. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, discussion.
I recuse myself.
All over the favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, while this, while you're signing that, you have an individual on Zoom, I'd like to pose a question to, could I, I'll pose it through you, Mr. Chairman, there, we need, we need some alternates on the planning commission, and there's an individual named Jim Thomas that might be interested in doing that, and I wonder if he would, would be able to speak on that now, if he still, still would like to do that, or not, Mr. Thomas?
Go ahead, Jim. You're there, Jim, go ahead, I guess you are.
I'm, I'm here, I've been very quiet. I'm willing to serve as an alter down on the planning commission.
Do you want an official letter from Jim?
Yeah, would you give us a, give us a brief letter, Jim, and we'll act on it.
Both of you.
Jim, if you can just, Jim, if you could send me an email, or Karen an email, we can, I guess we can accept that?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
How about, how about an email, Jim?
Both of you.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
It's quite the pen, Merrily.
Me? That's so I can conk him on the head every so often, I can wake him up.
Keep you on it, yeah. Feels like it's getting hotter and hotter in here. Just you, Bob.
Is it?
You're hot. I don't know, they haven't serviced the boiler, so probably not.
These pump brothers aren't equipped for heat right now. Something in the spot where it isn't?
Yeah, we don't know what that spot is.
We just forgot to do that part.
Ran out of money.
Whoops.
What can we, we can put in a bathroom, or take out the insulation?
Well, I remember sitting in the backseat of the SH260 helicopter, watching the rivets fall out of it, built by the cheapest...
Lowest bidder?
Lowest bidder. I'm not making that up.
Oh, no, I believe it.
Aircraft was like 30 years old when I was in it. You're looking for a total of eight.
That's correct.
There's two.
I have no idea who picked that password. What it means.
What password?
For the Wi-Fi?
It was Forrest, when we first moved in here.
No, it's different, this is from the new stuff.
The new modem?
Oh.
Any select board comments or concerns? Merrily?
Not other than minutes aren't being done on time.
Okay.
There was one, I'm right, just one.
Right. And the DRB minutes were not correct, if you go back and listen to the audio, they were not correct.
What was wrong?
Keller had said that the reconsideration was gonna be open for all of the Sand Hill, and it's not in the minutes. So if someone could go back and listen to the audio, there seemed to be a section missing.
Anything else, Merrily?
Yeah.
Bob?
Good.
Dick?
All set.
Joe?
Should we see if anybody plans to attend the Cedar Act meeting and determine whether it needs to be warned?
I plan on being there.
You're on the committee, aren't you, anyway?
Right.
Anyone else?
Doesn't change the fact that I'm on the select board, so if two other people show up, it should be warned.
Yeah.
Even if we're not gonna do anything, and technically, it's kind of gray, so we are on the side of caution.
I would like to go, but I can't guarantee that I can.
If you, I wanna call who?
I wanna listen to it.
So that qualifies me being there, right?
Yeah, should be warned.
So we should warn it?
Just go ahead.
Better warn it, to be sure.
Just warn it, and then, the worst that can happen is, we don't have three people, which is no, no harm, no foul.
Anything else?
Is it for me?
No, okay, Joe. Is that it, Joe?
Yep.
All set? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I just caught, Katie Culpo's on, she has her hand up.
Hey, Katie.
Hi, thanks, I, I did have email, I just wanted to make a comment and get on the record to some of the town manager's comments, specifically around conflict of interest we were emailing today, so I knew he was gonna bring up conflict of interest, so I, I too have, I've been reflecting on our email, I too have concerns about conflict of interest. They're a little different, though, I, I, I feel there's been an incredible amount of pressure put on the Sand Hill DRB members to support the project via ethical handouts at board meetings, and, I mean, I've got, it's all in the meeting minutes. I'm concerned now about the conflict of the town manager announced, the zoning administrator. I am concerned about the conflict of interest of the town that's invested in the approval of this project, and this board actually voted to appeal the BRD decision. I've spent a lot of time reviewing meeting minutes, preparing for tomorrow, and I'm really, really concerned about the conflict with the developers being intimately involved in the Castleton zoning regulation changes that have happened in this town since the purchase and sale agreement was signed in November of 2020. That immediately sparked the December 2020 planning commission's revisions to our zoning ordinance, which hadn't been changed since 1986, and then, so that, that started in December of 2020, by February of 2021, we had the addition of PUDS. Whoops, we forgot to add the language of a height variance, so by May, we added in the language of a height variance to meet the accommodations of the Hail and Hail purchase agreement with the town. Now, perfect, so now it goes through the DRB, and then it was July of 2021 that it was added to the DRB's agenda, the conflict of interest. And then, that was the big August 2021 meeting, and then October, and then it was at the October 22nd, 2021 meeting, and Mike, you were on Zoom, and the DRB was discussing what happened at the October meeting, and they were discussing the meeting minutes and municipal tax and affordability, and you stopped them, Mike, and you said, "Hold on, wait, wait, why is the DRB even talking about this? Only thing you should be considering are zoning regulations." You know, but the zoning regulations in our town have been changed to meet the project. So I, I think there's a lot of conflict of interest that's going on here, but my overall... So I think there's a lot of conflict of interest that's going on here, but my overall concern is that during a pandemic, our entire zoning regulations and the directions to the DRB have been only consider the zoning. I just, the whole thing, there's just a lot. It just feels incredibly soiled to me, the entire process, and, so I think there's a lot of conflict of interest. So that's all I wanted to share. Well, and then, the town is a no, Mike, I didn't, you mentioned that tonight. I think the town is a no right now. I think the Castleton Village School project feels a little bit more like a bummer and a no than the Sand Hill project. I will stop there, but thanks for giving me a couple minutes, but I think there's a lot of conflict of interest that's on the record and in the meeting minutes, and it just doesn't feel right.
Thank you, Katie. Any other individuals?
I'll make a break.
Mike?
So I think that, to refute what you said, Katie, is, when you have regulations and you find shortfalls in regulations, whether it be definitions or, or something that the town would benefit from, by, not by me, but by those that attended public meetings or on the planning commission, that's how, that's how you make changes. If it hasn't been changed since 1984, one could argue that our zoning regulations may have been severely outdated and not keeping up with what's going on financially, economically, growth-wise in the town, so I think having changes is normal. The timing is, I think, happened because of questions that came out of the meetings, like, something's not defined, and how do, when do you make the, when do you make those decisions, I guess, to make your updates, to clarify something? So just want to say that, that point, and then, as far as the, maybe what I said in our meeting about what they should be focused on, is, there was rabbit holes that were going down, that people were going down, and I asked the question to the, to the DRB, is, what do they go by? What's the, what's the standard they go by? Is it opinions? Is it what they want to see, or do they have to follow some stipulations, and I think, or guidelines, and part of those guidelines does give the DRB flexibility, and they can put conditions on things. So I think that what they, those conditions were within their purview, and I won't go any further than that, but I think there's, if you move forward, you got to make changes if you find out something's outdated or archaic or whatever, so that's my response.
Thank you, Mike. Dick?
Just a quick thing, I think that we all on this board, as in particular, and perhaps the planning commission and the DRB as well, should dust off and review the town's conflict of interest policy to remember what the definition of conflict of interest is. And Mike, I'm going to paraphrase here, but the definition of conflict of interest is either a direct or indirect financial or personal gain, or an indirect financial or personal gain, by, by that means a close relative, personal friend, et cetera. So I don't believe that this board or the planning commission was compromised by a conflict of interest referring to any direct or indirect personal or financial gain. So I don't think that that particular comment is applicable to this board, and perhaps not to the planning commission either. That's all I have for a comment, but I would recommend that we all dust off that policy and review the definition, so we understand exactly, when we use that phrase, exactly what we're saying.
Okay.
That's all I got to say.
Anything else? If not... Do we need an executive session, Mike?
I'd like one, I'd like one.
Okay.
Personnel and real estate.
Personnel and real estate?
Yeah, real quick, not, not in over 20 minutes.
Make a motion then, and...
Make a motion, we go into executive session for, let's do the personnel one first.
Is there a second?
No second to that.
All those in favor, is that with the town manager?
Yes.
With the town manager. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tonight, Tom. Good night, Tom.